Yeah. We have.
After that, it's all snores from there. I know he's here, but he's not here. I recognize him. He says, don't forget the necklace.
But if you want to do one next year, it's all yours. Because I'm not going to be doing it on hold. No idea. Honestly, I hear they haven't served. Brought up where anybody asked for it. So, so I honestly know that I just brought up Toby. Yeah, I got a write your note request on making property. So I knew it was.
I'm, it's a good idea.
Yes.
You see it. Welcome, everybody, to the Olden Borough Council meeting for April. You can make a hand for the pledge. If you have a cell phone, please silence it. Just did mine and make sure that there's no interruptions during the meeting. I'm not asking you to turn it off. We have a busy agenda tonight, so we would all rise. Everyone will remain standing for a minute. Chief, Chief Sabillo had an unfortunate passing. His niece Chrissy Duffy Ferris was only forty-two. Passed away. Her burial service was last night or burial was today. That's why the chief is not with us tonight. And she has several young children. And she had a long battle with cancer. It's been a moment of silence in her memory. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, the roll call for you.
Mayor Chaichi, President for Cogeo, Councilman Blunt, here. Councilman Borders, here. Councilman Sally, present. Councilman Lambert, present. Councilman Smythe, here. Councilman Walker, here.
All right, so we have a bunch of awards and appointments tonight, and we'll start with the mayor. Okay. Proclamation for our fine firefighters. Thank you all for being here. I really appreciate. I see a lot of people that I know very well. Thank you to Mayor of Collingdale, Donna Mateus Badea. As you know, we use the term hero very loosely nowadays, right? You could be a hero if you pick up someone's coffee on a Monday morning from Wawa. But on the act of being an actual hero, it's a very, very rare occurrence. But on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, we had one of those occurrences. On that day, a very stormy day, members of our volunteer fire companies of Clifton Heights and Collingdale, along with Norwood Ambulance, responded to a call for an unresponsive person at the Clifton Heights, excuse me, Clifton Alden Train Station. It turned out that the person was having a cardiac arrest. These volunteer fire companies ended up saving that person's life. I'm going to read a proclamation expressing our gratitude for their service. And we'd like to invite up the leaders of our fire company, those who are present and were there that day. For the Collingdale Fire Company crew, I'd like, if I can ask Assistant Chief Steve Danella to come up. Where are you, sir? Come up here, please. And Chief Nick DePompeo told me that Deputy Chief Larry Mellon was the one on scene. If he could come up, where are you? Deputy Chief Mellon, thank you. Very good. I'm going to present one of you both stand over here. I don't feel surrounded. I'm going to read the names of the members who were on the call sheet that day, whether directly or indirectly. These people helped save that life. Clifton Heights Fire Company crew, Deputy Chief Larry Mellon, Engineer EMT Anthony Serino, Firefighter Bart Brenner, Firefighter Matt Powers Senior, Firefighter A.J. Murphy, Safety Officer Bill Rafferty, from the Collingdale Fire Company crew, Chief Matthew McLaughlin, Franklin Benson, Assistant Chief Steve Danella, Stephen Edwards, Brian Feeny, Shane Feeny, William A.J. Jackson, Colin McCann, Thomas Morris, Anthony Pizzani, Mark Randolph, and Chris Ruane. These people volunteer their time. They don't get paid. And they save our lives. So truly, they are heroes. So I'd like to read the proclamation. I have two copies that are going to each of our fire companies. Proclamation honoring the heroes of February sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Whereas on the evening of February sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, during the severe storm, first responders from Clifton Heights Fire Company, Collingdale Fire Company, and a Norwood Fire Company ambulance were dispatched to the Clifton Alden Train Station for a report of a person in cardiac arrest. And whereas despite hazardous conditions, the responding crews arrived promptly and finding the patient unresponsive, not breathing, and without a pulse, immediately began administering lifesaving care, including CPR, with persistence and professionalism, until the ambulance crew arrived and continued the CPR for approximately thirty minutes, until the patient regained a pulse and could be transported to the hospital. And whereas due to the swift, coordinated, and heroic efforts of all those involved, the patient survived and was released from the hospital at the end of March. Now, therefore, I, Michael Chaichi, Mayor of the Borough of Alden, do hereby proclaim our heartfelt appreciation and profound gratitude to these first responders from the Clifton Heights Fire Company, Collingdale Fire Company, and Norwood Fire Company ambulance for their heroic actions and exemplary service. Let this proclamation serve as a lasting acknowledgement of their bravery and the critical role of our fire companies, our fire companies play in protecting the lives of our residents. In witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the Borough of Alden to be affixed the sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty-five. Let's get them around. Why don't we, yeah, let's get pictures with these two guys, and then why don't we have each of the fire companies come up? Now I'll stand in the middle. Now I don't mind being around. Let me suck in. Okay, yeah, okay, right, sure.
What, both fire company?
Let's, let's, let's start with Clifton, just for alphabetical order. Start with Clifton, and then we'll have Collingdale, and I don't know if we can all fit into framing, but we'll get everyone. Everyone in Clifton, come on up. Thank you, Collingdale.
Thank you, guys.
One more sec. A dollar short, Donna Mateus Badea.
Sorry, guys. Okay.
Thank you. Collingdale, please come up. It won't be in the. Okay, do you think we can fit everyone? Let's, we're even doing a wide angle. What do you think? Now, don't even try it. All right. Guys and gals, thank you so much. Get one more round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, the fourteen-year-old who was on that pole, what's your name? Jane, all right, Jane. Thank you very much, guys. Thank you.
The mayor has a spotlight tonight, so.
That's how I like it.
Next, we have, you have to have a motion, Mr. Mayor. Joyce, would you like, if we're going to appoint, our longtime fire marshal, Lil Garrity, has been ill the last couple of years. We thought that he might be coming back. He doesn't live in the borough anymore. He was a former fire chief, former president of Collingdale Fire Company. But since that is in place, we are going to be appointing a fire marshal and a deputy fire marshal in the city. And I'll turn it over to Vice President, Mr. Lambert, to make those.
Do you want me to do both at once?
You can do it one at a time. We'll go through them each one.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mrs. Lister. I heard you. Uh, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to appoint Rufus Stokes as our new fire marshal.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor to appoint Rufus Stokes as our fire marshal. Is there a second to that motion? Second, second by Kate Blunt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You guys have it. Why don't you do the other one, and we'll get them sworn in together.
Okay. I would like to appoint, I would like to make a motion to appoint David Favenger, I hope that's right, as our deputy fire marshal.
There's a motion on the floor to appoint David Favenger as our deputy fire marshal. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Walker, I'll give it to, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Mr. Stokes actually is, you gentlemen can come up. Mr. Stokes actually did a call for us this month.
Right.
Unfortunately, a fire, and comes highly recommended by the fire chief and the police chief.
They can both come up, right? Okay, great. Hello, sir. And if you have a question, okay, come up to. Don't be shy. Tiny little borough. We're all friendly. Do you want to, the Bible? Okay, so now you stand, sit at the left, and you hold the Bible. You put your, but the Bible, raise your right hand. And Rufus, okay. I, Rufus Stokes, do swear.
I, Rufus Stokes, do swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the laws and ordinances of the Borough of Alden.
And the laws and ordinances of Borough of Alden.
Yep. And to perform the duties.
And to perform my duties.
Of my office as fire marshal.
Of my office as fire marshal.
Of the Borough of Alden with fidelity.
Of the Borough of Alden with fidelity.
Thank you, sir, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, let's do a picture. Yeah, no, let's, I'm sorry. Did you get a picture? Okay, this guy's on the ball. Okay. And it's, it's Mr. Favington?
Yeah, Favington.
Favington, I'm sorry, Mr. Favington. I said your name wrong. What's your first name? David, okay, and it's. Deputy Fire Marshal, okay. Did I say it right, or Favington? You're close, I, close. Yeah, do you want someone to hold it?
Chief.
Come on, chief, stand over here. Do you like the word swear or the thumb? You have a problem with either? Okay. Put your hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. I, David Favington, do swear.
I, David Favington, do swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the laws and ordinances of the Borough of Alden.
And the laws and ordinances of the Borough of Alden.
And to perform the duties.
And to perform the duties.
Of my office as deputy fire marshal.
As my office as deputy fire marshal.
Of the Borough of Alden with fidelity.
Of the Borough of Alden with fidelity.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
You got a picture?
Yeah, okay.
This guy's quick. All right, all right, we got pictures. Okay, thank you. And thank you again to everyone who came out. We really appreciate you. Thank you.
The modern point of technology. All right, we thank the fire company and the fire marshal, deputy fire marshal, who have both have vast experience. They have been fire marshal and deputy fire marshal of multiple municipalities, including currently surviving in media, deputy, and Mr. Stokes, among other, Darby Downton. So we have another set of appointments. I'll turn it over to Kate Blunt to make those appointments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to appoint members of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. Those members are James O'Neill, Sarah O'Neill, Erin Graham, Ian Post, Teresa Foley, and Steve McFarland.
There's a motion on the floor to make an appointment of members of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, as mentioned. Is there a second to that motion? Councilwoman Kelly, all those in favor? Any opposed? You guys have it. Ladies and gentlemen, come on up. The mayor is going to swear in. I would have to say three of the members are not here tonight. Sarah O'Neill, McFarland, and Ian Post.
But I know. Is it okay if we do it without? Because how are we going to manage the Bible if everyone hold it? You're fine without it? Is it okay? Oh, just, you want to hold it? Okay. Well, stand over here so that we can get you on Zoom. Okay, okay. I guess I can, you know, if you want to, I can hold it. You guys have to raise your right hand. So if you want to put your hand on the Bible, you're welcome to. Otherwise, you don't need to. Okay, I'm going to say, I'm going to repeat each line, and this is member of the Shade Tree.
Advisory.
Advisory Committee. Let's get it right. Okay, so I'm going to say I and then blank, and then you're going to say your name. So I do swear.
I, Eric, do swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the laws and ordinances of the Borough of Alden.
And the laws and ordinances of the Borough of Alden.
And to perform the duties.
And to perform the duties.
Of my office as member of the Shade Tree Advisory Commission.
Of my office as member of the Shade Tree Advisory Commission.
Of the Borough of Alden with fidelity.
Of the Borough of Alden with fidelity.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
All right, I love that. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill is one of the spurs behind the role of his daughter, and we appreciate the effort he's putting into this. And we'll mention again, but your first meeting is going to be here in the building on the Tuesday, the twenty-ninth. Is that what they, it's the end of Tuesday at seven thirty? Great. Anybody's welcome to attend if anybody else wants to join.
It's an open meeting.
They can come to the meeting, and we can swear them in later if they want to join the meeting. They have a boatload of ideas that they want to bring to council. The mayor already has a draft of.
I see it. It's, it's definitely.
I also thought.
Not, not ambitious. Put it that way. It's, it's great. Thank you for that.
I'm sorry, what's that?
And I will be. Seven thirty here on the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth. I'll mention it again when we get to the end. Great. Okay, is there anybody that signed up for public comment? No, there is not. Okay, we're moving on. Oh.
If I can, maybe real quick, I may think.
For a council member from Collingdale, fireman too, were you?
Yes, yes, but I wasn't on the call.
You wear many hats.
Yes, so.
As do all of us.
Just like to say, good evening, all. My name is Councilman Stephen Zay from Collingdale. I want to extend the Collingdale Borough's thanks to you all for acknowledging the first responders from Collingdale Fire Company, Clifton Heights Fire Company, and Norwood Ambulance. While these responders do not do the work for the recognition, when others do recognize it, it validates their hard work. So Collingdale Borough does thank you guys for recognizing the all, the first responders.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
This isn't your first rodeo with us either. You've been here before.
Yes.
We appreciate the support.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Seeing nothing else, moving on. Is there a motion to approve and accept the minutes of the previous council meeting as presented by the Borough Secretary?
I'll make the motion to approve a minute.
There's a motion by Councilman Blunt, seconded by Vice President Lambert. All those in favor? Any opposed? Uh, we don't have any Borough Communications Receipts, please. Okay. Mayor, you're back up again. My fourteen-year-old.
Thank you.
It's the Michael Chaichi, so.
Okay, the first things first, every, uh, fourth, at the end of each quarter, I need to report, uh, to this council and to the public at large, uh, my wedding officiating report. And during the quarter of January first, twenty twenty five, to March thirty first, twenty twenty five, I performed no marriage ceremonies and therefore received zero dollars in payment. Uh, over the last month, I've, I've been working with our, um, IT contractor and go-to. They're setting up, uh, getting things set up in, uh, the swim club and this building and the new municipal building with, uh, fires wifi. And, um, they are setting up a lot of other things, including a new, um, phone system. So, they're in the process of that. Uh, additionally, I've been working with the committees, uh, the June Care Committee headed by, I believe, Lana, but I believe uh, Vice President Lambert may mention that later. Uh, and of course, uh, Councilwoman Blunt, um, held our first organizing meeting for the Fourth of July. Um, and, yeah, the new and improved, we're finally getting videos back online. This, as we speak, we're live on YouTube, believe it or not. Um, I'll have to find out, I'll have to be able to give the specific URL. I believe the account is just at Alden PA on YouTube. But I think if you just do youtube.com slash Alden PA, I don't think it turns up. So, I'll have to sometime in the next, at the next meeting, maybe I'll be able to. It's brand new, so that's why I'm unfortunately not prepared. And, uh, that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Are there any questions for the mayor? I have two. Uh, have we switched over yet on the internet or not?
Yes, in two or three places. Today, I believe they were supposed to have it set up in the municipal building, but I think there was a complication.
They're just waiting on power.
Oh, is that right?
They did come out, they reviewed everything. It's gonna be a, um, pretty simple hookup because there's actually a line. They're just gonna feed it right underground and then it's very simple.
Right, very good. And obviously, at which point, we're gonna cut off Comcast.
Are we also Zooming as well as YouTubeing or are we not?
We're Zooming and it streams straight to YouTube. Okay, okay, got it. Appreciate you.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
In reference to that, is that for public to join in on the Zoom?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can. You can watch and you can.
We have it up now.
We occasionally get people that, we have people that are on line. Occasionally, they raise their hand and they ask a question. Okay.
Zoom's been going on since the pandemic.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, the, but unfortunately, um, there was some complication with the posting of the recordings. And now we're just starting fresh. We started the last couple of months and we'll be posting this. This one, I think the way it works, it is a stream and then it'll automatically be on YouTube. Hopefully, we won't have anymore.
Very good. Uh, next is Borough Manager, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm gonna report on our twenty twenty five road program. Olden Borough actually has a very good problem. We don't have many streets that need to be done. What we are gonna be doing is the three hundred block of Alden Avenue. And that is three hundred and seventy-five feet by the width, which is twenty-four and a half. We're gonna be doing the full intersection of West Magnolia and Albert Avenue, which is roughly a thirty by fifty area. That's the area right now where the infiltration bed is. Hopefully, that will alleviate any tunneling or plumbing we're getting at the, uh, ADA ramps. The last area we have is on Marion Avenue. We're gonna be going between one forty-two and one fifty-eight Marion, which is roughly two hundred and fifty-two feet. The reason we are doing that street is because there have been so many patches in the last five years due to, um, probably either Aqua or, uh, Pico with gas, and it just looks terrible. So, we decided to do that one as well. The estimate at this time is worth about forty-seven thousand dollars. So, it's a pretty good problem that we have where our streets are really in good shape. If anybody does see any potholes or anything along that line, we also have a five thousand dollar reserve for that as well. So, if you see it, report it. We'll put it on our pothole program. Next thing I have is the update on our new building. Uh, at this point, the rugs are gonna start going into certain rooms sometime next week. The exterior is now about seventy-five percent complete. Some of the sidewalks are actually finished today. The weather held us up for approximately four days due to rain last week, but we're still on schedule to move in on phase one, which is roughly April twenty eighth. So, we're actually in pretty good shape, moving along nicely. And that's all I have.
Uh, any questions for the Borough Manager, Vice President Lambert?
Do we know when Clifton Avenue will be paved?
I do not, but it was about a month ago. I got a PA one call. Means they're going to be doing it. But, as you know, yeah, uh, it's a state highway and Pico's project and they. So.
Plus, it's also, is, they sub out that.
They sub it out as well, correct.
So, there's a, there's an arrangement they have with the kind of, which is our tagline.
But I thought it would have been done over a month ago when I got the first PA call, but.
Yeah, I remember you mentioning.
Still not done.
We've been hoping. If my memory serves me correctly, there were multiple calls before they dug it up as well.
Absolutely. And this project started, I think, last June. So, let's. It's a one-year, two-year-long project.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask, but do you have any update on the house that's being built on Schuster Avenue?
No, that's, I thought you were a resident there. I actually have been wondering that myself. I went down. I actually saw the contractor there, uh, once last week and once this week. I mean, I don't know why it stalled, whether it's a money issue or.
It was going along so quick.
He said, I, you know, I even talked to him myself. He said people were gonna be there by Christmas.
Yeah.
And then, here we are. It's not a huge deal, but, you know, there's a lot of mud with all the rain, all the mud there, so it's kind of annoying, but what can you do? I was just simply curious.
I wish I knew.
Yeah.
It's a shame Mr. Carpat is not with us, but I have asked him the question recently as well, since it was pretty dormant.
Yeah.
And he said he hadn't gotten any further requests for permits. They've done everything that they got permits for.
Right.
And they're sealed, but he's waiting on them to come to him with more stuffs before he can approve it.
Understood.
I thought the house was sold before he started.
That's what he told me, but then he said that they might have backed out.
That could be the reason. Okay, uh.
I can tell you the official report from Commonwealth says they are completing the mechanicals at a snail's pace. Proceeding painfully slowly at the new home. So, that was the report I got from.
Mr. White, you wanna give them us an update on the fact that we had to, uh, as is our normal program, like we do the road program every year, we do the tree inspection every other year?
So, yeah. So, I. Sure, sure. So, I also did a, every two years, we do a borough inspection of all our trees, just to see what kind of shape we're in, how healthy they are, et cetera. Um, and I don't have the final estimate yet. He's supposed to get it to me, but we're roughly, we have a very large tree behind Jeffrey Park. It's on quite an angle. It probably should come down this year because if you get a lot of winds or a lot of raining, the roots are just gonna give way and nothing's, it's just gonna take out.
Jeffrey Park is behind.
It's behind Jeffrey Road. It's gonna take out at least a garage or two, and it's a very large tree, so it may even get to a house. The swim club area was in decent shape, but we will be thinning out some of the trees, just so the wind will be able to go through in case there's a storm. Uh, the tree by the municipal building, which if anybody noticed, we put a fence around that so they wouldn't disturb it. It was highly recommended that we do injections into the tree for the root system, even though the root system wasn't disturbed for about fifteen to twenty feet. It was highly recommended that we do that.
Was it like a vitamin kind of thing?
Yes, and it's the same thing with the Christmas tree. We thought the Christmas tree was, uh, diseased or in trouble. He thinks we're fine as long as we treat it, and we have to clean the ivy out underneath, pull all the pine needles out and clean it.
Ask the children not to go in there.
Well, I noticed some of the branches. It looks like there's probably kids there.
Maybe we can put some kind of a little.
Yeah, and they sort of white picket fence, you know, with flowers.
And up here at our park here, they'll do the same thing. There was, uh, two or three small dead ones, which we won't take out. Any loose dead stuff that he obviously sees, he will be cleaning that up as well.
He's gonna give us a prescription for both the trees and he mentioned the treatment.
They would be two. I would highly recommend we do.
The two trees by the tennis courts at Wood Lawn.
It's not my tree.
Okay.
Once you get.
School District.
School District. Yeah, once you get to the fence, it's the school district property over to.
I didn't even look at him. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, they were, they were pulling a lot of dead, small dead branches this morning when they were cleaning.
Vice President Lambert, you have your hand.
Well, actually, excuse me, but he just brought up the ash. We looked at a couple of them down by the swim club, and believe it or not, I know everyone was keeps hearing about these ash trees and the beetles and all, and they're all gonna be dying out. We're lucky right now down at the swim club. We have several ash trees that are not damaged yet. So, you're right, Councilman. It's only a matter of time.
No prescription to try and stop it from happening now?
Lord of the Weevils? What is it?
Beetles, I think.
It's an invasive species, that guy.
And I'm sure our Shade Tree Advisory Committee, some of the members are still here, will have something to say about that. Council, Vice President Lambert, do you have a question as well?
Well, yes. Because of, uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Kelly's noticing the tree, even though it's not ours and we noticed it, do we tell the school district? Or are we assuming they know?
No, I will let them know.
We don't.
I'm just, the only thing I'm gonna tell them is that check the trees. We got a couple complaints.
Right, okay, alright. I don't wanna just.
They've been very responsible in the past. I can tell you that, though.
All the residents use that.
It'll be next week.
Yeah.
Cause they're off this week.
Okay. Oh, yeah, spring break. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Borough Manager? Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Uh, our solicitor, we have, we have two for the price of one tonight. Peter Musso and Mr. Ron Pola is here. Gentlemen.
Neither was there any public. Always happy to talk about things in exact.
Brought the power. Uh, are there any questions for the solicitor? I have one. Where do we stand on the Lincoln Sewer and Trash? Has that been turned over to you yet, or the tax collector?
Jerry's pretty good about that. I can confirm that and get back to you.
See where we stand.
Sure.
And absolutely. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Seeing, uh, moving on to the engineer. It's not back Burns tonight. It is Peter.
Hello, everyone.
Dotson, who was actually, you're an older resident, right?
I'm not.
Oh, I knew you were living in town.
No.
You live close to town.
I think there's someone in your company who does.
Yes.
Uh, wasn't you? Okay. We met him at the, at the expansion.
Maybe you'll wanna come.
Mr. Burns is on, uh, vacation at the moment, so we're ably represented, but, but, you go answer it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, my report for tonight's meeting includes the following, uh, starting with the Alden uh, municipal building expansion project. Uh, the construction is progressing effectively. Despite the weather delays the last two weeks, uh, the following items have been completed. The new water line has been installed and connected to the building. The new service line, sewer service line has been installed and connected to the building as well. All windows and doors have been installed with the exception, the training room window. The two car, uh, proposed two cars, parking spaces in front of the building, um, have been prepped for concrete pores, curb pores, excuse me. The proposed sidewalk on the, uh, northern side of the building has been poured today. With respect to the RACB federal, uh, grant reimbursement, uh, our office was informed last Friday by Tetra Tech that they have been working with the Office of Budget to execute the grant as all of the required documents have been submitted.
Great.
And they're working as quickly as possible to get that executed. And I think was my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the general engineer? That is, we're getting a scope of work approval. And then the next step is, once that comes down, which is six to eight weeks according to their.
That's what they tell us.
Uh, then we can submit, even though we have all the documentation and we're almost at two million dollars of the three point two. Uh, we can submit for reimbursement from the state, but it's a lengthy process.
Very likely.
I appreciate it.
I'm optimistic at this point.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
So, uh, is the idea, so, um, so we have a six to eight week window, then we can start submitting um, the receipts, so to speak, and then, do we have any clue how long after that we could start expecting to get paid? They will not give us a factory time.
But when we were on the call in February, cause I was on with, uh, Matt and Peter, uh, they said a year.
Yes.
Which surprised us because they had previously, one of the representatives from the, this was, this was the third party. Cause the way the state works it, there's a third party that makes sure you got everything in order and then to make it to the state. And our contact had told us sixty to ninety days once we've submitted for reimbursement. And as I said, we have sent in the material for the scope of work, even though the building is more than half complete. And I know that we requested a meeting with this group a year ago, or a little less than a year ago, and they didn't meet with us until February.
Correct.
To start the process, and we couldn't submit anything until we dealt with them, because the rules of the state are, you have to go through the third party individual before you get anything. And as I said, it's, it's a lengthy process.
So, fifty to ninety days is what you were originally told?
Yes, but once, we're gonna be submitting all the rest of the documents for the second phase now. So, as soon as it comes back, they can then send that up the line, because they need to review all this before it gets submitted to the Office of Management Budget for payment. And a few other, labor and industry and a few other people have to sign off on this. Like, like, seven different sign-offs before you can get your money back, you know?
Great.
Yeah, very good. Any other questions? Seeing, uh, moving on, treasurer, take your ranking.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'll begin my, uh, report tonight with the general fund. Uh, the beginning balance of cash on hand was two hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. Our receipts for the period were, drumroll please, one million, one hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred forty-one dollars and two cents. Um, we transferred, uh, for the, uh, building project, um, from the bond money, one million, one hundred four thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-one cents, and that was included in our net expenditures of one million, four hundred thirty-seven dollars, eight hundred sixty and twenty-five cents. And so, the ending balance of cash on hand is one million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-one cents. Thank you to the good residents of Alden for paying your taxes. Okay, uh, moving on to the state highway fund, the beginning balance cash on hand is one thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Our early receipts for this period were eight cents in interest, but we are anticipating that our liquid fuels money, which is roughly a hundred thousand dollars, should be coming in within the next year. Um, our expenditures were nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, leaving an ending balance of cash on hand of seven hundred and forty dollars in the state highway fund. Finally, the sewer fund beginning balance of cash on hand was two hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and forty-four cents. Our receipts for the period, which was our sewer rent, which comes from our taxes as well as interest on our sewer accounts, um, was four hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents. Our expenditures were one hundred ninety-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars, which is the first quarter of, uh, payment to the Darby Cricket Authority for the sewer fund. And that leaves us within any balance of cash on hand and a sewer fund of five hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. Mr. President, at this time, I would ask council's approval to pay, um, bills from the following funds. From the general fund, one million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and twenty-five cents. From the state highway fund, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And from the sewer fund, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars. That completes my report.
Uh, is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report and authorize his birth spurs on the bill list?
Yes, Mr. President. I'm making a motion to accept the treasurer's president and pay our bills.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Lambert. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any questions for the treasurer? If I understand correctly, the million dollars was put back into the bond fund because we draw down.
Transferred that's from the bond.
Oh, from the. To pay the bills. I got it.
Yes. But hopefully, we'll be able to put some money to our reserve fund, but we.
Right. Get that reimbursement. And we've gotten a large dose because of the discount period of our sewer and our, our real estate tax, but we're, we're waiting on EIT, which is not due until the end of this month.
So, we're hopeful.
Yeah.
Make sure that your, um, paycheck's are being baked in the variable.
Indeed, yeah. But make sure you check. I, I work in Delaware. I, for those of you who have been at this meeting, you've heard me say this in a number of times. They're not required to withhold your money if you're, my day job is down in Delaware. Um, if you're in the state of Pennsylvania, they are required, but that doesn't mean they do it right. Uh, we've heard people it's something withheld and remitted to Upper Dorey, even though Upper Dorey doesn't have a EIT. So, um, it's very important to check.
That would be me. That would be me, though. I think, I think I have our payroll custody at Look Street now, and it's a good business. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Moving on, reports of the committees. Public Councilwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to report that our trash totals for March were a hundred and eighty-one point eighty-eight tons. And our recycling totals are moving up again, thank you very much, three point seven six tons. And just a reminder, there is e-cycling and drug takeback at the Borough Parking Lot on Saturday, April the twenty-sixth, from nine to noon. E-cycling, essentially, if it has a plug, they'll take it. Um, and there's also Darby Creek Cleanup, which will be down at the swimming pool, which is actually fun getting dirty for a good cause. So come on down to the pool after you've done e-cycling and brought that, brought all your drugs in to be just gotten with. And that concludes my report.
You will use muscles you didn't know you had when you are at that creek cleaning up.
Everything.
Right?
I do the parking lot along the wall.
You will be, thank you very much, Council. Any question for the councilwoman? Uh, I just have one, Mr. White, we have a drug takeback sign. It's not up yet. Do you know where it is?
Yes.
And we, we should. We shouldn't, cause I know the Bushes put their plants down.
I always put it up the Monday, uh, because it's now a generic one we use every year, and it says, this Saturday.
Alright, there you go.
So it will go up.
I will say, I did hear, I did hear on KYW and another radio station that they were, they had public announcements about the drug takeback.
We are actually the only municipality in the Delaware County who's collecting.
We're the only one that's left?
We're the only one. We are the home base. Everybody drops off to us now. How about that?
There used to be, there used to be multiple. Well, that's what happened. They went, they, they put it in a lot of locations for pickup. And how often does it get cleaned? How often do they come in to?
Every two weeks unless it's filled, and sometimes it is, but we have to call him at.
Wow, yeah.
So we have a very good program where, um, we're one of the best in county, and he doubles every time it comes.
So there's, no, there's a, there's a box inside the municipal building when we're open between nine and four. You can bring your stuff up and slide it in a slot, it's like a mail slot, and then they, they come and pick it up and you dispose of it in the proper way. I knew at one time.
We had pharmacies come in as well.
We've had mul, we had multiple municipalities were involved. I'm surprised we're the only one that's left doing the drug take.
So are we. We're glad to do it for the county, but.
Very good.
Little Alden is.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing, uh, moving on, public works.
No question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, so I was listening to that, so that's open to not just Alden's for the drug takeback.
Anybody.
So we had, I had a resident come over to meet us at the firehouse, and she has like a bag, I mean, so much, and I'm actually quit, getting ready to send it to her now, so I wanted to make sure that we do.
You can tell her to come any day, stop and put it in. It's a mailbox, mail slot.
Inside the lobby.
Inside the lobby.
You have to get inside. The, the building has to be open for you to put it in.
Perfect.
It'll push the box.
Does Collydale's not have, they, they just put a box anywhere?
We do not. We do not have anything.
There's a lot of municipalities that do it.
We do e-cycling and stuff, but we don't have anything for the drug take.
Yeah, tell them to come on down.
Thirty-five or forty.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing else, moving on, public works, Mr. Councilman Borders.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have nothing of significance, uh, to report this month. Uh, there's a couple, a couple issues we're monitoring. Uh, uh, I have to get together with Mr. White, uh, to go visit one of our residents. I've, I've been having some physically limiting issues of weight, so I hope to get that squared away soon. Uh, but I would like to, uh, remind the residents that during spring cleanup time, uh, make an extra effort to, uh, clean your curb lines and any debris in the street. Uh, you know, because, uh, a lot of that stuff, it all floats down, and with a lot of the new sewer work, we've got, um, uh, a different design sewer grade that, uh, tends to clog up rather quickly. So, uh, if we can keep our streets clean, we won't clog up the, uh, the inlet covers as quickly. And that completes, completes my report.
Thank you very much. Those are designed to be safe for bicycles. That's why they're such a small.
Yes.
And they do clog with monkey balls and thieves and rats and all sorts of stuff, very, very readily.
Yeah, very smoothly.
Um, I do have a question. Uh, Councilwoman Lambert, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, um, Councilwoman Borders, have you received any responses from the letters from Providence, of Providence?
I personally have none.
No, any comment?
I haven't either, that was.
So that brings up the question I had. We're supposed to do a quarterly, that's the, the second, when is that due to be done?
I wrote it down and make that go on Call of War.
Okay, cause I know we did, the plan is now to do that block three times, three times a year. We were doing it twice a year. We're not gonna do it three times a year because it's clogged on.
But it is part of our.
It's part of this.
Yeah, it's the southeast quadrant, we're gonna do this.
They will get three this year as well.
Correct.
But that's gonna be on the special list and has to be done.
Yep. So I would think by next council meeting, we'll have it scheduled.
Okay, we don't have a, I haven't heard anything about Jeffy Road. Is that going away? I shouldn't have said anything. That was another trouble spot we had with Reese, so we can't figure out.
I'll actually put it on the list. I'll just have them deal with it because it's only a matter of time.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for the councilmen? Seeing them, moving on, highway, Councilman Walker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, very late this month. Um, piggyback off of Mr. Borders. Uh, it's springtime, weather's turning. Uh, as we've seen today, we have a lot of wind, so please check your trees, be mindful if you're sitting as trees are, um, the branches are growing, sprouting, and you have dead branches, uh, they're probably gonna fall down at some point, so just be mindful of your trees. Uh, it helps both, um, any type of widow makers that might be out there, if you don't know what that is, that's a very large branch that could cause injury or harm to someone, or any type of, uh, property as well. Um, one thing I did notice on my way over here on the corner of Magnolia and, um, Ridley, there was a temporary stop sign that was placed. I don't know if something.
I saw that, the little one.
Yeah, the little one. I, I didn't get a chance to look at it, cause I was driving over here.
We had a tractor trailer cut the corner.
Oh, okay.
Guess I'm not, not surprised. With the amount of traffic that's going that way.
I saw one of our residents on Magnolia.
No, I, I, I found it odd as I drove by, uh, because there was a, a construction truck that was on the corner. I thought maybe they were really nice and, you know, put it there in case somebody didn't see the stop sign, but I thought I wanted to ask.
That's a lot of traffic going down that street.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so stop at your corners. Uh, speaking of corners, uh, Magnolia and Beach, uh, I mentioned it, I think at the beginning of the month, the, the sidewalk, especially with the, the rain we've had, it is now a very large hole.
They have been contacted.
They have been contacted. Okay, fantastic. And lastly, uh, warmer weather means people are gonna be outside, kids are gonna be out using their Christmas presents for scooters, bikes, all that fun stuff, so be mindful on the roads. I know we don't have the ice cream truck, but I'm in the borough, but I've heard it out, which means if you're on the borders of Alden, kids are gonna be running, probably to get to the ice cream truck in the surrounding area, so please be mindful, watch your corners, uh, and, uh, drive safely.
We do that sort of mode exercise in them as they try to cut you.
Yes, they do. Have to work for it.
Councilwoman Blunt, you have a question?
But yes, actually, I, um, got a phone call from a resident on Beach Avenue, different subject.
Okay.
Um, she's visually impaired from like a peripheral, and apparently there was a vehicle that was parked on the wrong side of the street facing the wrong direction.
Oh.
Um, as she was walking to the trolley, the person was in it, so I don't know if it was, she didn't know if it was a delivery. Um, she knocked and said, you're going the wrong way, and just sorry, sorry. But, um, I did tell her that I would bring up, can we have police or code make sure that all signs are in good repair and visible and not covered up by any branches?
They're visible. But you would be surprised how many people come up.
I, I.
Yeah, I've seen three or four come up, you know, the wrong way. I mean, oh, especially during the, during the outbreak construction, yeah.
Yep.
I know.
Yes, well.
Thank you.
But it is, I will go down and check to make sure the signs are there.
If, if we need one another one, or there's a branch or something that has grown over it, but, and we, we talked for a while, and I said, you know, there's we, we can post all you want, but you can't make people follow the rules, unfortunately. So I did advise her that if she saw that at any point in time, always call nine-one-one so that, number one, there's a record of the incident that happened. If there was anything that happened, the police would then know that they could ask residents for other information. Um, even if they couldn't get to it right in that moment, if it is a problem that is identified, because it happens all the time, then we can look at the next things. We talked about how long it took to get a stop sign at Clifton and Magnolia. Um, but I did tell her that we would take a look and make sure everything is still fully visible and everything's posted properly.
Part of the other problem, though, is that people will go down the one-way street, visit somebody pulling the driveway. When they go out, they turn around, you're out the opposite direction.
Yep.
And I think Mr. Borders is right. With the construction on those, people are cutting through and they just go, if it's clogged, they go to the next street, not even, they're not from town.
They're not even paying attention.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Lambert.
Um, well, Councilman Walker, stop signs.
Yes.
Are Birchwood and Elm and Elm, I, I, if I'm not mistaken, did you all say that Elm and Maryland is not us?
I think it's California that's not us.
Yeah.
California.
And then part of Maryland, kinda after up the hill and towards Springfield, but not us.
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
Once you get to Birchwood Road, you're upper garden.
Okay, so this is the really faded one at Elm and Maryland, as you go, like where you go to that, it's like a dead end, and then you turn and go around to Maryland. And then that sign that you fixed is leaving again.
Well, with the wind and everything, I'm not surprised. Okay.
That's the Birchwood.
We, we did have some.
I have to flex a little bit.
We did have some able volunteers that did those signs for us in last fall.
Are they gonna volunteer?
Well, maybe we could reach out to them. They said when the weather got warmer, one of them is sitting here tonight. Maybe they could, maybe they can help again.
Once the weather gets warmer, we're all healthy.
Yeah. We appreciate Council.
Okay, so give myself a two-year notice, right?
And who was your assistant? Was it Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
We appreciate.
Larry just had a knee replacement, and I've got some.
Why do you?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm, I'm the guy that's gotta go up on the ladder, so. We appreciate the effort. Uh.
Just in reference to going off of the council, councilman's, uh, ending statement. Um, do you know, do we know who has control over the, the speed limit, uh, fifty mile an hour during the school, during the school hours? Do we have, do we have control over that as a borough, I mean?
Meaning what?
Like.
Turning on.
You mean why it's on, because schools off?
No, I mean, is there a time that it can be put on when there's sports being played there and here? Okay.
That, I actually need approval from Penn Dot, because some of these are state highway, which is Clifton and Providence. I have to send a letter, get approval if we even decide to change times.
Gotcha.
A great idea.
There's a, uh, during like the, even during Saturday morning soccer, people just fly.
But what we can do is we can put cones in the street, which we used to do years ago.
Yeah, maybe that's something to think about.
It's just a whole row of cones, which slows everybody up.
Yeah.
I can mention it to the chief.
Thank you.
Sure. Zach, do you mean just during soccer?
Just, there's a lot of sports coming on, like during the season, but I know, like, personally.
I thought they did do it during soccer seasons, as I.
I don't see it.
We, youth club hasn't done it for years.
Yeah.
It's October day.
Yeah.
I know Saturdays is when I've, when I see the people flying by and the sports going on, and it's very, there's like a game at each, you know, it's very crowded.
Cars on both sides.
Right, people crossing, kids crossing, yeah, it's, it could be dangerous.
I do remember we used to do that, we should probably go back to that, go back to that again.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is, um, Matt Chutley still the youth club staff?
Yes.
Until the end of the year.
Give us a schedule, when they're gonna have activities up there, and we can make sure we have it.
Spring soccer is finished. Just so everybody knows that ended, uh, but that means that T-ball and they might use the other baseball, other side baseball field, but normally they're gonna do it here. Uh, ball soccer will pick back up in, um, August. And the, if anybody drove over here and saw the, the, the kids playing, I don't know who they are. They're not part of the youth club, so.
They're not practiced. They, they've been practicing there every night. Yeah.
They're there.
Okay.
The fields are open for residents to use, and I often see families and young, you know, kids up there playing and stuff. They.
I know, this is a, this is a keep.
They can't be organized without, first, chief.
All the youth clubs, I think, T-ball has been practicing behind, um, the schools. And some of the other teams that have conflicts here have been playing at the other field and practicing during the week, so. That's baseball, but the soccer organization, I don't know who they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to have insurance. They gotta go through us first, anyway.
Do us a favor, the next.
I was referring to the T, the baseball for this time, yeah.
If you see a team up there playing and they haven't got, cause that is the school district's property, that the borough leases it and we maintain it.
Right.
They have to go through our record in order to get permission. They have to show insurance and a lot of other things before we give them permission to use the field. So if they're using it as a team event and they're not letting us know, we're, we're liable.
Yeah, I was just referring to, uh, the T-ball. I wasn't really.
All I would say is if you see them do, all nine-one-one, our police can check them out.
Are they using our nets as well?
Yeah.
Well, the nets stay up.
I know, I understand, but.
Yeah, they're using our nets, too.
Yeah. I don't, I'm texting that to see.
One of them is coming down, one of them.
Okay, well, the youth club maintains that. We don't.
One of the nets is coming down.
All right. Seeing no other questions, uh, public safety, Councilwoman, Vice President Lambert.
Mr. President, I have the report from the, uh, Clifton Heights Fire Company for the month of March. There were eleven alarms in Alden, uh, one commercial building fire, one building investigation, one vehicle fire. These, uh, assisting the police department, there was one. There were four, four alarm system checks and one gas leak inside, and two motor vehicle crashes. And there was, there were no estimated losses, um, reported in the borough of Alden for this period. The but then it says, two vehicles and a garage, approximately seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
That was the fire on, uh, West Riley, correct?
Okay.
It may have been a typo. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. And, um, time of service, twenty-six hours and forty-one minutes. I think that's the combined for Clifton and, and Alden, an average of twenty-six minutes per alarm. And for the Alden Police Department report for the month of March, the Alden Police Department logged seven hundred and fifty-two incident reports. There were, um, within that, there were four thefts, two reports of fraud, nineteen suspicious activities, six domestic disturbances, eight disorderly persons or groups, three subjects in mental crisis, there were thirteen motor vehicle accidents, thirty-five medical emergencies, and one protection from abuse, uh, violation. The, uh, Alden Police Department patrolled, uh, three thousand, eight hundred and forty miles during the month of March. There were a hundred and sixty-two traffic citations issued. There were forty-nine parking tickets issued. There were two criminal arrests during that time. And the one thing is I want to thank, uh, Councilwoman Blunt, the call that she assisted the resident with was a call that was coming to me, and they got her before they got me. So thank you very much. But she did let me know. We talked about it. Um, we are continuing to plan the Juneteenth celebration, the second annual Juneteenth celebration, which will be Saturday, June the twenty-first, at the Alden Elementary School. And we've been meeting, and we have some of the, um, items completed. We have a follow-up meeting on this Saturday, actually, um, at, on Zoom. Um, April the nineteenth is Saturday. And also for scams, I actually was a victim. Um, please check the email addresses when you get sales announcements by email. The one that I got was from Bath and Body Works, and because I get them all the time, and I know I've ordered before, I, um, placed an order, and when I checked, I was gonna pick it up. When I checked the, um, Marco Crosswords, Crossroads Store, they had no record. And then I went back and saw that I didn't actually get a confirmation, and they told me I had to call Bath and Body Works, and what they said is the email, instead of saying bathandbodyworks.com, it was bathandbody.e2 dot, a bunch of other things that I did not, but it looked very official. So luckily, they, um, credited it, and they were able to, you know, get my items. I need to go pick them up. Um, so just be careful of the email. So of course I unsubscribed to that one because it came to, she said also something when the email, when our email address shows in all caps, sometime that to, uh, to watch that. Because that, yeah.
Or a different font. I get ones that are in a different font from regular store names, and I just hover and it's unsubscribe or delete and get rid, block, block. Unsubscribe or delete and get rid, block, blocks a good one.
Yes.
But yeah, if it's weird font, it's, it's a bad one.
Yeah. So they're still going on and they're still doing things. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any questions for the Vice President, Mr. Walker?
Um, I'm not sure if you know or the chief knows, the, uh, cause of the garage fire? That's currently under investigation. At this point in time.
Uh, Mr. Stokes is a matter of fact.
Yes, Mr. Stokes was called in on the spur of a moment that day. Okay. I don't, I haven't gotten my official report from him as, as of yet. Okay, great, thank you.
Thankfully that was a detached garage. It wasn't attached to the house, it wasn't the house that was going on. Yes?
I just wanna add to what she was saying, it's sometimes too, the, the As, they have a different, like a not font, but it's a different way. Uh, or like a capital letter where it's supposed to be, it's, it's those little things, uh, you do that you don't normally pick up. That you do, ah, I'm doing it and you click it, but there's been some where it's just like the A is spin the other way or it's a different font of the A.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, and misspellings.
Yeah. Yeah.
Always look for misspellings and that is your key as well.
Poor punctuation.
It's too good to be true.
Yeah.
Yes.
The good thing was I used a gift card and not a credit card, cause that was, so when they said, did you check with your bank? And I said, actually, it was a gift card, so.
Nobody's giving you anything.
Oh, good.
Good choice.
That's why I was using it, cause it's like, okay.
I assume they didn't get any money, actually.
And then, no, it shows, it, it showed that it took the money.
Um.
But, so the gift card balance is lower. Yeah. But it's not like it came to my credit card.
Well, that's good. Actually, you, if it were your credit card, you, you'd be able to get, uh.
Yeah.
A charge back, whereas the gift card, they won't give it, they won't.
No.
Then you have all that different, like identity words.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the Vice President? Seeing none, moving on, law and order and Councilwoman Blunt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of things. First, I would like to make a motion to advertise changes to ordinance one eighty-one dash seven, property maintenance. And ordinance two oh six, solid waste and rubbish.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor to advertise changes which were promulgated from the planning commission. To ordinance one eighty-one seven, property maintenance and ordinance two oh six, solid waste rubbish. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it, Mr. President.
Mr. Borders, all those in favor? Aye. Of those, Mr. Mayor.
And I was in opposition.
Any other questions?
Yeah, could you give us a summary of what that is, please?
Well, when we get to the planning commission, we'll do that, Mr. Tartaglia will, we'll handle that. I just wanna ask, we have to advertise or, or did it already get advertised? Will we, um, what was the one we were supposed to? Heather, has that been re-advertised or not?
Not yet.
Could we do them all together? That's very good. Yeah, so we need to forward the ordinance to, to them, right? And you need, you need the language and the words, so.
Yeah.
Have you sent me?
I think Mr.
The final of the rubbish one? I will get that too. Okay.
It was supposed to have been sent, we'll make sure that they get.
The only one I have is the pedaling one that was voted out of planning commission. That's the only one I got. And I sent that to you because that's the one we specifically talked about.
Well.
Yes, we have that, yes.
Um, the veterans.
Yeah. They have that all set.
Okay.
I will get that to you tonight.
The other two.
Yeah, we'll get it to you so you can send it over. Very good. Uh, sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, yes, okay, so that's those. Re- regular report from common vote enforcement for the month of March. We processed fifty-six applications approving forty-seven permits with a fee value of twelve thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents. There were eight permit fees doubled for starting work without a huge permit for fines of two thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars. Total income for permit fees and fines was fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. There were fifty-three site visits for items like your concrete pre-pours, final inspections, roof spences, et cetera. There were six sale inspections, one hundred and six rental inspections, thirteen rental re-inspections and two transfer re-inspections. Total income for the month of March was twenty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. There were hearings held in district court on March sixth. And as we talked about before, one oh nine Chisler Ave is moving along in a snail's pace and you've already talked about municipal building. And that's pretty much. From that report and the next thing. I would just want to let everyone know is that we did have our first Fourth of July planning meeting last night. Um, this is a borough of volunteers, a community of volunteers, not just a community of homes. So as always, we look to have lots of fun, but it takes people to help us get there. So there will be communications for signing up to participate in the parade. That's a volunteer thing. Dress up your kids, put your dog in a wagon, sign up to be in the parade. It, it'll be lots of fun.
Win a prize.
Yeah, you could win fifty bucks.
I think you're so proud, that you're in your place.
Do some, have fun. So we'll keep, we'll keep recording on that and you'll start seeing communications from the borough, from the Fourth of July Association. I would imagine you'll also start seeing posts from the Juneteenth, so we've got a, a lot of fun stuff coming up for this summer. And then, um, I just wanted to say thank you to the O'Neals for, again, bringing up their, um. Their ideas about shade trees and street trees and how it can have an environmental, a positive environmental impact here in our borough from a beautification, from a heat island. Kind of thing, and I wanted to point out that this is what small town civic engagement is all about. You know, they had a complaint that has now turned into an advisory committee, so I just wanna thank them and commend them for their involvement. And I look forward to what the committee comes back to us with. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any questions for the Councilwoman? Seeing, I appreciate all the work that you did and I, the O'Neals have been turning out to, they do a lot of work. So I'll be, I'll be interested to see what happens as well.
You're gonna explain the ordinance to us?
Uh, we'll do it when we get to the thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was.
Yeah, uh, finance, Councilwoman Smythe.
Good evening, thank you. I make a motion to approve a three-year swim club lease.
Uh, there's a motion to approve a three-year swim club lease. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Borders, we discussed this before, it dovetails with the next one, but their, their lease is up at the end of this month. They're currently paying seven hundred dollars a month, but because our costs are going up to maintain the property, uh, we're gonna be going to eight fifty a month, as a matter of fact. The treasurer told me that she already sent in payments for May and June to do and paid eight fifty, even though we hadn't formally approved it yet, and I appreciate that for doing that. So, uh, any other discuss, all the.
Just, how do we know that the raising of their prices is actually gonna be sustainable over?
The lease that we're gonna, we, we have a contract with, the next one, which probably should have gone first, a three-year commitment for a fix price to do the grass cutting and the removal of leaves and stuff on the property. That went up twenty percent, so their rent went up twenty percent. And part of that property is the boroughs where the playground is. It's not, some of that we have to burn, bear the burden on because it's not this one close property. Uh, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, you're still up, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve three-year contract with Higgins Landscaping for grass cutting and leaf cleanup.
There's a motion on the floor to approve a three-year contract with Higgins Landscaping for grass cutting, leaf cleanups of the swim club property. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Borders, as discussed, that our costs are going up about twenty percent from what we're currently paying, but it is a fixed account for the three-year period, which is very great. Uh, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those. Uh, go ahead, you're still on, Councilwoman Smythe.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve bone, a bonus for a borough manager not to exceed two thousand dollars.
There's a motion on the floor to approve a bonus for a borough manager not to exceed two thousand dollars. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
I'll give it to Councilwoman Kelly. She raised her hand, she didn't say it. If we were not on our last meeting, uh, we've had discussion, Mr. White was originally supposed to leave us by the beginning of July. He is gracious, we agreed to stay on to the end of the year with a modified schedule and part of the reason for us being able to do that is we offered a bonus to do that. And that's why this is on the agenda to be voted tonight, above and beyond his normal salary. Uh, any other questions? Seeing, we, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those. And you'll hear something later, but the work he's done on the municipal building has been enough to cover that. Go ahead, Councilwoman, you're, you're up.
Um, that's all I have. Can someone read our financial report, please?
Yes.
Council, your coworker on the committee, Vice President Lambert, handled that.
Thank you. The reserve account balances, um, for the general reserve, twenty-four thousand thirty-six dollars and forty-five cents. For the sewer reserve, three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-six cents. And for the police capital reserve, fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-four cents. For the bond.
Let's move with the bond.
Yeah. With, uh, bond number. Okay. For bond number one, two million, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, no, that's not right. I, I did this wrong. Okay. Okay, two million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and seven cents.
Yes.
For bond number two, ninety-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and, is that eighty-six or seventy-six?
Eighty.
Eighty-six cents. And that concludes the report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Any questions for the Councilwoman? Seeing none, we'll move on to the reports of the boards and commissions. Uh, zoning board did not have any hearings. Uh, planning commission, Mr. Tartaglia, would you illuminate us the, to the changes for the two ordinances that have been discussed that we've recommended to Council?
Evening, Mr. President. Um, chapter two, two of, two eighty-six for solid waste. We, our previous ordinance had, uh, trash containers limited to the rear yards and they had to be solid, they had to have lids. And we recognize that that's not always the case in today's world. And responding to complaints about trash containers being in front of the residence, planning commission. Offered up to the, to council some regulations which would permit trash containers to be stored in the side yard of a home. As long as they were ten foot behind the front property line and shielded from view from the street. And in consideration of places like Jeffrey Road, where you really can't carry your trash can through the house to get it to the sidewalk. To allow those, those buildings to have the trash containers secured at the front of the building. Again, shielded from view from the street. We also per, are suggesting that trash bags, particularly the heavier style trash bags. Be allowed to be put out the morning of the trash collection, not the night before, but the morning of. In lieu of this traditional metal or plastic can. And that's in consideration of, you know, some of our residents that just can't get the pans out there. You know, they're too heavy and they, or they don't have enough trash to fill a can to be put out at the curb. So it's some modifications to that trash ordinance. Um, I'm glad we're done talking trash at the planning commission. And, uh, for solid, that's our solid waste and those council have any questions regarding the rest of it? There is a, a section there also about bulk trash, but they're pretty much just reiterated what we had done before. In terms of mattresses and electronics and things that it just clarified and put it all in one place. The council, or anybody having questions about solid waste?
Mayor. I, um, so in the case of when we do default leaves. Um, according to this ordinance, we're supposed to put that out until the morning, is that, is that what you?
Now, the, the leaves are still permitted to be put in the recyclable brown bags.
Okay.
We did not put, we did not change the number of bags that are permitted to be put out at any one time.
But they can go out the night before or they?
Well, they're not attractive to pests.
Ah.
So the plastic bags, we, it's the morning so that the pests have less time to get to them.
And make a mess.
But the, they're not gonna go after the leaves and the sticks.
Right, right, okay.
And our, our current ordinance prohibits bags and as anybody that's driven around will know, uh. Probably more than half of our residents are using bags because that's the way that it's trending, so we decided to put something in there. Asking for heavier bags and trying to keep it to the road and some squirrels don't have a nice, they don't. You go ahead with the property maintenance one, the.
We did a section on the property maintenance, which, uh, re-identified what we called portable, uh, sports equipment. Um, clarifying that it has to be pulled back behind the front wall of the house after a certain time. And that it's not allowed to be left out or placed at the curb and, but we added a section there for non-portable equipment, things like swing sets. Uh, hockey nets when they're installed, basketball courts, swimming pools capable of holding twenty-four inches of water. Anything that you can't pull back at the end of the day, when your children are done, are now restricted to either the side yard or the rear yard. And completely prohibited from the front yard. And when you put them in the side or you put them in the rear, they have to meet all of the setback requirements for your zoning district. That was the largest change, I think, uh, because we, we separated the recreational equipment into two. We have a portable and non-portable portion and completely outlawed the non-portable from the front yards.
Great. Thank you very much. Anything else to report from the planning commission, sir? Was that great?
Oh, no, we took, took a deep breath, um, we, we looked, we looked at the overlay districts and said, yeah, we'll see them again next week.
Any other questions for the planning commission? Thank you, Mr. Tartaglia, Chair of the Committee. Uh, rec for, Mr. Walker.
So we had the season plan exchange, uh, at the end of March, which we talked about at the beginning of, of April. And, uh, yes, some of our, our members here, uh, that were great, uh, supporters in fact, contributed, Melissa, uh, congrats, thank you, that was, you did a lot. Well noted. Um, we do not have a meeting this month. We have another meeting coming up in May and I was just trying to find what was on our schedule, but I don't remember what was coming up. I know that we have a subcommittee for our Juneteenth and Fourth of July.
He's got Fourth of July tasks for you.
Fourth of July, right, so those will be the big planning ones coming into the summer.
We're gonna start planning that.
Right.
Chili cookoff, we're gonna start planning.
Yes, so our, our chili cookoff, our November Fall Festival, whatever, we're gonna be kind of expanding it a little bit. We wanna make it a very grand, uh, occasion and so we're gonna start planning early for it this year, so.
That was awesome.
Yeah.
That was awesome.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll be able to expand and make it a little bit more than what it was last year. And that, uh, anything else, Melissa?
Um, I think that was it. There were some little things, but that, they were the big ones.
Yeah, all right.
So you mentioned about the Juneteenth, uh, committee as a subcommittee, should be, should we be sending some type of report to the rec board? Cause we have not done.
No, there is.
I'm on it.
Yeah, you're, you're on, yeah, it's just anybody that wants to help volunteer plan for it, so it's not like any type of reporting and, you know, checks and balances, nothing like that. No, it's just.
There, there is a support.
We're, we're there to help if you, if, um.
Just the way they do with the Fourth of July, they, they, they're supportive.
But you mentioned it, I thought, okay, maybe we missed a step.
I'd like to see a rundown of that.
Yeah.
I need a report.
How many vendors?
Right. And I.
We closed the rec board. Thank you very much. Any questions you have. Melissa, Melissa Kostic is on both, as men, we all wear multiple hats, it's such a small borough, so.
Oh, really? I don't do.
Yeah. Hopefully, as you well know, so she's, she's keeping the, as she well knows, keeping the lines of communication open, so we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Historical commission, is there anything to report?
Nothing much, except we're, Melissa, maybe wearing another hat. Shoes, I do shoes, I have. Maybe wearing another shoes, along with the mayor, and we're very, um, grateful.
You do? Indeed. I can't weasel my way out.
We will, we will, I know.
He's gonna help claw now. He won't get that call anymore.
Oh, yeah, I know. John, Johnson Hunter, remember?
I just won't raise my hand.
He and, and our council president have, have done it many times to help us out, so, um, but, uh. And we just, I did add the proclamations that we received last month to our archives and, um, we are, we pulled that. We can flush it out a little bit more than the trees, than the trees down. And the tree's down, yeah. We didn't have to put any shamrocks on it or.
No vitamin injections.
No, that, no, that, that is not necessary, that's all.
Very good, any questions, seeing none, maybe on civil service commission, did not meet this month, their next meeting will be scheduled for May. Uh, it'll be their, actually their organizing meeting, so that's a good thing. Uh, is there any unfinished business, I don't think so. Alright, new business, all of these meetings will be held here at the John P. McLean Community Center, starting with, it's not on the list, but the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, which is just. Uh, it's warning tonight, they're gonna be Tuesday, the twenty-ninth at seven thirty. Borough Council Caucus will be Wednesday, May seventh at seven thirty, the planning commission will be Thursday, May eighth at seven thirty. Uh, the Rec Board does not meet, uh, will meet in May, May twelfth, which is a Monday night at seven. Civil Service Commission will be here on the fourteenth, which is a Wednesday at seven thirty. And our voting council meeting will be on Wednesday, the twenty-first of May at seven thirty, are there any privileges on the floor from anybody tonight? Mr. Feinberg sent me a notice, he is not well this evening, he has flu and he doesn't wanna get anybody, but in regards, it was not a good day on Saturday for weather. Although the pancake breakfast did very well, I presume that I was there at the Legion, you don't have a total list of how much you guys made on?
No, no, I had uh another commitment I had to go to that day, so.
Uh, but, so, two items got canceled from that day, delayed, so the Booster's Easter egg hunt will be this Saturday, rain or shine. Here at the Fields, if it's good, if not, it'll be in this building at noon. And the youth club, uh, was not gonna originally redo, they're gonna have a granite parade opening, Mr., the, uh, I just found out from President Matt. Shortly that they were gonna do that, he will not be here, but they're gonna do what they had planned to do last week, it would be a parade. In the morning, I don't know if they contacted you about doing it, because originally they weren't gonna do it and they decided to go ahead and do it anyway.
We scrambled.
And then there'll be a ball, the, the small kids will be playing and then there'll be a break with Easter egg hunt. And then they'll come back with, the older kids will be playing in the later afternoon, is the way I understand it, scheduled to be?
Nine AM, did you say?
No, yes, parades at nine.
Parades at nine.
At the school.
Yes.
And it comes up very, you meet at the trolley stop?
Yes, we meet at the trolley stop, we'll walk down Woodlawn Avenue, we'll head up Schistler and then here at the Fields. It'll announce all the kids, somebody will throw out the first pitch and we'll get into baseball.
Very good.
Eighty degrees, I think it would be good.
I hope so.
Great, so is there any other privileges on the floor, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion.
Councilwoman Blunt, seconded by Councilboard, is all those in favor? Any votes, thank you all for coming tonight, we appreciate it.
Alright. I'm just gonna say. They did well, that was great. We have so. We have two powerful attorneys here. There, there are.